Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. May 31st, meeting of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, Planning Commission. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting. Before we get started, we always begin with an indication. I've asked Ms. Oster if she'd be kind enough to provide us that indication this morning.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we just praise you so much this morning for everything that you give us, for the blessings that are ours, especially the blessing of Jesus Christ. Lord, we ask that as we enter in this time that you would give us open hearts, open minds, that we would do what's in accordance with your will. Lord, I pray that you would have a special blessing on those that have lost loved ones, those that are in such terrible things, the school shootings that are happening. We just pray for our first responders, our police, as they give us protection. Lord, we just pray that everything here, that the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart will be acceptable to the side. In Jesus' precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, ma'am. I do appreciate that. Number two on the agenda for the Planning Commission, consideration approval on May 3rd, 2018 minutes.
The move.
Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to old business, any?
There is no old business.
Thank you. Moving on to new considerations. We need to... Number A, 4A.
The first item is a conditional use permit for Ronnie Moore, 141 Deer Ridge Trail. Mr. Moore is seeking the conditional use permit to replace his father's existing home with a 2018 16-by-80 manufactured home. This property is located on the southwest side of Deer Ridge Trail. It's a 16-acre parcel of family land that's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan. He's showing in white where that new home will be placed. This is his existing home, and it's going to be raised as soon as the new mobile home is moved in and set up. RE1 does allow manufactured home as a conditional use in certain hardship, temporary or emergency situations. And Mr. Moore's father is elderly and in ill health, and he needs a new home. This is a view of that house that will be torn down. And then these are just surrounding homes in that area.
I make a motion, we set the public hearing.
The move. Second.
Motion by the South, second by Mr. Morris. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Moving on to B.
Next is a conditional use permit for Grady Keith Allen at 280 Oakdale Road. Mr. Allen is seeking a conditional use permit to add 240-by-72 buildings to the existing rental storage area on Oakdale Road. This property is located on the south side of Oakdale Road. It's a 21-acre parcel that's zoned RE1. Mr. Allen owns the surrounding parcels around this property as well. That's an aerial view of the property. And then this is their site plan or their map of that rental property area. The two new buildings are shown in yellow. They'll be used for covered parking of campers, motorhomes, and boats. This is a view of the front of that property. And then this is at the back. This is where those two new buildings will be going, is at the back. And Mrs. Allen is here, if y'all have any questions for her today.
I'll make a motion, we set the...
Question about Mr. Gaines, we set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Cross. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. C, Ms. Renee.
All right. Is a rezoning request for True Built Homes LLC on North Sand Hill Road. They're seeking to rezone property on the north, on North Sand Hill Road from A2 to RE1 for a five-lot development. The property is located on the east side of North Sand Hill Road. It's an 18.06 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. And this is their plat, their survey plat, showing the five parcels. All of the parcels will front on the public road. Each of the five lots contain 3.67 acres. They included a set of restrictive covenants in the permit application, and it sets the minimum heated and cooled area for homes as 2,000 square feet. If the rezoning is approved, they're also seeking a dimensional variance for Lot 1. Lot 1, RE1 requires 100 foot of lot width, and the survey plat shows Lot 1 is having 58.29 feet, so they'll be asking for a variance of 41.71 feet. I don't believe anybody's here today. These are our views of that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
I think I'm pretty aware of this. I've looked at it back when there was somebody else involved, and then again, the only one that has any issue is the one that is narrow at the front. And I think there was a church or something that was on that corner at one time, and...
This church?
Is it that?
I think it's that church, yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure which, but I remember there was something that made the front not go all the way through the road, but it's still a large...
This is the lot right here.
Yeah, it's still a large lot.
Next to the church.
And I think it'll be fine. I'll make a motion when we set it.
Motion by Mr. Gaines. Second by Mr. Cross. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on to D. Ms. Renee.
Okay. Is a conditional use permit for Sam Quinetta Norwood, 309 Heather Road. Ms. Norwood is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 2018 28-by-60 manufactured home on this property. It's located at the end of Heather Road. It's an 81-acre parcel of family land that's zoned A1. That's an aerial view of the property. There are three other homes on this property. And this is an approximate location of where the new home will be going. And these are the other homes that are on that 81 acres.
I make a motion, we set the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Motion by the South, second by Mr. Gaines. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Moving on, Ms. Renee.
All right. Next is a rezoning request for Vernon McFarland at 1681 Highway 471. Mr. McFarland is seeking to rezone property on Highway 471 from R1B to C2. This property is located on the west side of Highway 471. It's a 3.2 acre parcel. That's an aerial view of the property. There's an existing home on this property that he's proposing to renovate and expand to a daycare facility. This is the zoning map. It shows that property that adjoins this parcel to the north is zoned C2. This is his site plan. He shows the parking area on the right side of the driveway coming in. That's going to be flipped. It's going to be on the left side of the driveway coming in. You can see the existing home there. And this is the front elevation. He's going to have a covered porch or portico there on the front of the building. This is the actual house on that property. And this is the driveway coming up to the property. It's currently got a tree line border, and so it will buffer the, from adjoining properties. He's going to clear out some of the underbrush along Highway 471 to help with visibility entering and exiting the property. Mr. McFarland is here, if y'all have any questions for him. There's no really other pictures that were taken, because most of that right in there is wooded. There's nothing to take a picture of.
Mr. Gaines, much pleasure.
I'll... Happens.
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Cross. My apologies.
Yeah, I'm good to set the public hearing.
Mr. Cross. Motion by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morrison. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next.
Next is a conditional use permit for Southern Environmental Group, Inc. on Mount Helm Road. Jim Foshee of Southern Environmental Group is seeking the conditional use permit to expand the existing Class 1 rubbish disposal facility at 495 Mount Helm Road with the addition of a 20-acre adjoining parcel. This property is located on the north side of Mount Helm Road. The 20 acres is shown there in red. This is an aerial view of the property. And then this is his site plan. This is the existing landfill here. This is the adjoining 20. All traffic will enter and exit through the existing entrance to the landfill. There will be no traffic from the 20 acres on Mount Helm. This is a view of that property, the 20 acres. This is as well. This is the entrance into the existing landfill. And then these are pictures of the existing landfill. Mr. Foshee is here, if you have any questions. If the rezoning is approved, he will seek to amend the solid waste management plan to include the 20 acres in the existing Class 1 rubbish disposal facility.
I'll make a motion, we set it. Second.
So, Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. G.
Okay. The last item under new considerations is a conditional use permit for the Lindy Group, 118 Shirley Lane. Lindy is seeking the conditional use permit to add a new outbuilding to the existing CO2 gas plant. The property is located on Shirley Lane, which is, runs north off of Sand Hill Road. It's a 12-acre parcel, and it's zoned A1. That's an aerial view. You can see the existing plant there. This is their site plan. The proposed new outbuilding will be here. And they're going to use a, it's going to be constructed from a converted standard shipping container. The building will be used for long-term storage of paper documents, as well as an area for the control equipment server. This is a view of the entrance into the plant there from Shirley Lane. If y'all have any questions, representatives are here from Lindy today.
Is... I do. I have a question. Is there going to be, like, a concrete foundation poured, or are these going to be sitting just off the ground?
Yes, it will be have a concrete foundation poured, in which the structure will be vaulted to...
Does the structure be vaulted to...
Yes, we'll vault it down, so it will become a permanent structure on the foundation.
I don't, by looking at this, I can't picture exactly where it's going to sit, or... But there's some drainage problems. That's on the peak of a really high hill, your property, and the other side is some houses, or trailers and houses, that have a real steep drop-off to them. I would ask that y'all just be really careful to not allow any more of your water to run... I hear from them all the time, you know, that water's coming, and I, it's, they own a steep hill. I understand that. But if you would just be aware of that water, and if you can move it some other way, think about that.
Okay. Well, I think there is currently a proposed project where they're looking at possibly rerouting some of the stormwater on the north side of the property. I don't know that this project will not be involved with that. This is simply the setting of a structure on an existing grade, or be degrading, or any moving of stormwater from this program.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'll make a motion when we set it.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Approved. Moving on. I have zoning map that we missed up. Set the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we did. We do need to set that public hearing, just to adopt the new official zoning map.
I'll make that motion to adopt, set the hearing for the 18th. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Site plan, architectural review.
All right. Is for Interiors and Beyond Construction Group on East Business Park. They're proposing construction, construction of an 8,000-square-foot metal building for their office, an office lease space, and a warehouse space. This property is on the north side of Highway 80, just east of Carbonic Drive. It's a 1.50 acre parcel that's zoned I2. That's an aerial view of that property. And this is their site plan. You can see the placement of the building on the property. They're going to shut, have concrete parking for the office area, and in the back for the warehouse area, they're showing crushed limestone. This is the elevations of the building. The building facade will be metal with brick 12-foot high on the front, and then the first 25 feet on each side will also be brick 12 feet high. Mr. Parker has reviewed and approved the drainage plan. There's a floor plan. This is the office area for Interiors and Beyond Construction Group, and this is the lease space and warehouse in the back. This is a view of the property, where the building will be going. And then these are surrounding properties down on Business, East Business Park. They were unable to attend today. But if you have any questions...
Let's make them brick it all the way up then, if they're not here. (laughing). Mr. Gaines?
Well, seriously, they are going asphalt, though, or concrete.
They're going to have concrete paving, driveway coming in, and the front parking for the office, but in the back, they are, for that warehouse area, they're going to crush limestone.
What are we being asked to, or we want to sit...
Just approve the plan.
This would be approved.
Public hearing plan, plan, architectural side of it.
Yeah. Well, I make a motion when we...
And there's a good chunk of vacant land shed in front of it, so we can be a little bit more restrictive on the front, but it fronts the highway. This is going to be off the highway and at the site, and they're at least coming with some brick, so. Motion by Mr. Gaines to approve. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Moving on to nuisance properties. Number A, Ms. Renee. Or Ms. Schley, I should say, both of y'all.
The item under nuisance property today is the Gregory Nelson, nuisance property, 112 N. Street, District 1. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask for Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
All right. We've previously worked this same property for a complaint about a business being operated on the property. We got a new complaint. These pictures were taken October 9th of 2017, showing the condition of the property. These were April 17th of 2018, not any change. And then these are the new pictures that were taken yesterday. Good many of the vehicles have been removed.
Is, is anyone here on Gregory Nelson, nuisance property? Are you Mr. Nelson? Yes, sir. You might step forward, Mr. Nelson. Here Gregory Nelson at 112 N. Street. Is that in Brandon?
No.
Florence. Okay. Here. What is, what's the situation here? Inoperable vehicles?
Inoperable vehicles being stored on the property, or not sure what they're, what they're doing with them. That was the same problem we had in the past.
Craig, we can't hear. I can't hear.
Mr. Nelson, you'll step forward, and they can't hear, they can't hear what you're saying. Tell the board again what you were doing with vehicles.
Thank you, ma'am.
(inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
They've been there for a while, so they, they just...
They're gone now.
Huh?
They're gone now. He moved them out.
Oh, are they? When, when did you take the pictures?
The majority of them have moved out. There's still a few, but...
Okay.
Pictures were yesterday.
Yeah, it was yesterday morning.
Well, what's left? What we're seeing right there?
No. Oh, that's gone.
Well, I mean, okay, that truck, what...
Well, that's gone. He got it...
Right there.
Yesterday, huh?
Yeah, he's gone.
Oh, they're not there today?
No.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. Well, they're gone, I guess.
As long as we don't have store vehicles on the property, this residential property, we can't operate a business out of residential site. It just can't happen. So, I think you'll have to explain to your stepson that he can't use your property to store vehicles.
Okay.
That's, that's not going to work.
No.
Right? So, as long as it stays in the condition that it is now, assuming all these vehicles are gone, and we don't have a nuisance issue, what could we have other issues?
Well, since it's a repeat violation of the same thing that we've had in the past, we would like to recommend that it be declared a nuisance and sent to justice court. That way, it can be remanded for a year. If we have a problem pop up, then we can just go straight to justice court.
Karen, record.
Yeah. I mean, that'd be, I mean, I'm fine with that. And what that, all it means is, is we won't have to go through this whole process again. So, when I say that, this just prevents us from having to go through months of sending a notice, doing this. It's already established and it's on record, so, I mean, you're not going to let him, it's not going to hurt you, because you're not going to let him start storing them there again.
No.
But if he, he did, and you couldn't get him to move them, then it'd already be, I guess, on go to...
If there would be a proceeding, that could be addressed at the justice court level.
Right.
We don't have to deal with it here anymore.
Right.
But by doing this, he does not have to go to justice court now.
Or you could just declare it a nuisance and let us monitor it, if you, that way, and...
Well, that, that's fine, but I don't want to have to go through three months of paperwork and all that, if, if it happens again.
No, you would be authorizing the building official that as soon as the nuisance returned, there would be no need to come back here. It's simply a referral up to justice court.
Well, I'm good with that, then. Just let them monitor it. That's fine. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All right. We'll leave it at that, then. Y'all will monitor it, then.
No, you still have to declare it a nuisance.
Please tell me, right now, we got to...
Yes, declare a nuisance and instruct her to monitor the situation. If she sees another nuisance violation on this property, she's authorized then to take it up to justice court, where it is amedited, and serve the justice court process.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Number B.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that hearing is closed, just for the record. The second item is Cassandra Pugh, nuisance property, 256 Central Avenue, this is District 1. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate.
All right. We've received complaints about this property, a dilapidated manufactured home on the property. These pictures were taken in July of '17. These are pictures that were taken in April of seven, April of 2018. And then these are the current pictures that were taken yesterday. They have done some work, but the frame of the mobile home is still on the property and some debris.
Is anyone here on the Pugh matter? If you can, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
Cassandra Pugh, 256 Central Avenue.
Okay, look.
Got a question to ask.
What, what are we going to do with the rest of it, I guess?
We're trying to get rid of it. It's just my husband and I working on it.
Right.
My, we allowed my brother-in-law and sister-in-law live there for years, and they up and moved, and we were in oppression they were coming back. When we were able to finally get in there, because I didn't have a key, we had people lined up that was willing to do this when I first received my letter, but when we got in there, it was full of black mold. We could not get nobody within our means to come in there. So, my husband and I have been working on it as much as we can. It has to be Saturdays, because we work. And then the neighbor across the street, and his nephew or whoever's related to him, have helped us get this far. But we do intend on, we're hoping somebody will scrap it.
Do you have a plan yet for that?
Well...
You're just hoping?
Well, my son and his friends said they were going to do it, but if not, I'm going to ask. I don't know where to go to even have that done.
Well, you can't go have it done. You have to cut it up on the site.
Right.
And haul it off.
I mean, I don't know who to get to do that.
Three cents a pound.
Yeah.
That's what it is.
And I'm thinking if I ask, you know, basically it, or whatever, to get the scrap, take it, you keep the money.
Well, that's the only way you're going to...
Right.
Is just give it to somebody to clean it up.
Right.
As far, because it's not, scrap prices are, steel prices are, scrap prices aren't that high.
Right.
And so that's the only way you're going to do it. If you get the wood off of it, somebody might come in and cut it up, but...
Right. And then the woods go, the majority of it, because they burned the, they've been burning it. So, it's like from, have probably this section you're seeing here, right here on the end is the only part with the wood.
All right. Well, it's like you're making an effort to do it. The way we usually do this is we will declare it a nuisance, just so we won't have to go through this again, kind of like we did before. But if you're moving forward on it, I, I don't see it being a problem if you, it looks to me like you're making...
Yeah.
How far, where are we from when we took the pictures earlier? I mean, have we made pretty good steps?
Yeah, they're making good progress.
Right. So, I, you know, we, I'm going to work with you.
Okay.
It sounds like you, you know what you need to do, so. I may as well know somebody that would be interested in the, getting the metal part out of it.
Okay.
Hmm? And so, if I, you can get my number, and I'll be glad to, when you get to that point, if you have to, I'll be glad to put them in touch with you.
Okay.
Thank you. The, this one or that one?
But I will say, anybody that, you get to do that, you make sure they clean it up.
Right.
Just get the, that and leave that. Just make that clear.
Okay.
But no, they'll give you my number. I'll be glad to help you as far as recommend somebody, if somebody might get to come cut it up on you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I think he's got a question.
I have a question.
Craig. Craig.
That's my husband.
Yeah.
I always want to know, is, is that the only problem on our land that's, that's a nuisance?
I didn't even know about it, so I guess it is.
It's pretty clean, except for the stuff in the trailer.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure we do everything we're supposed to do, and we get it right.
Yeah.
I think it looks pretty good, other than just the debris from the trailer thing that you worked on.
Okay, thank you.[1621.37]
Uh, it's one point.
That lot is combined with our lot, which is right next door, it's two lots, but it's one point two something English altogether.
We live next up from it, but it's all our land.
Alright, well, so that, wouldn't that be the way, I think, alright, we just declared nuisance, y'all, and we'll just basically monitor it, you know, since, and y'all just keep doing what you're doing. And like, see if you can't find something, cut it up, call me, I'll see you.
I'll bet you there's somebody out there a little bit.
Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to declare it a nuisance. Second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make sure you, make sure you get my number. Okay, okay, alright, okay.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. We are adjourned. Out of the planning commission, we will now convene and open up the regular third meeting of the month for the Rankin County Board of Supervisors. Let's get started. Public, I'm on the wrong, wrong agenda, sorry. Do we have public comments? Anybody? Carl again. We've been having trouble getting in here to begin with, and I can't get rid of him.
Oh, you told him to be here every meeting.
Did you? Did we?
Be careful what you ask for, is all I'm saying.
Alright, Mr. Franco.
Okay, I've got a couple of issues, and I'm gonna.
I'm sure you do.
Yeah, it's not too bad. I just wanna keep everybody alive, stay out of the news.
Thanks, sir.
I'm giving y'all the cost of the updated projects anyway. We're gonna begin with the cost, because I know everything kinda starts, goes around that. So, this is as of, this week is where we're at on the courthouse, just to give you a brief breakdown of it. You can see that first item is, is what we've got budgeted and what we're seeing. Some of this stuff, we've already actually gotten priced or ordered, like the furniture and shelving, that's a firm figure, and actually came in lower than what we had estimated. So, if you look at that sub, it was twenty million, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred seventeen and some change. We've had some change orders to date. Most of them have been deducts, except for moving the dirt over from the courthouse site to the misdemeanor site, and that's resulted in a total change of seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So, on the courthouse today, we're at twenty million, forty-six thousand, one hundred fifty-six point eighty-seven, based on what's actually been done and what's still left to be due, based on our estimates. And that does still leave a hundred thousand dollar contingency in the contract, so we still have that to go back to. If you flip to the next page on the misdemeanor, you can see that we were substantially under on the original bid, and we've got some things that we were doing. One of the things I'm gonna bring to you today is a change order to add the security cabling and access control, which we had budgeted in the original overall price, and then we still got landscape budgeted. So, just to briefly talk about, we have two change orders to recommend for your review today on the misdemeanor. The first one is consists of two items. The security cabling and access, which we, again, had budgeted. The actual price was a little bit somewhat higher than what we originally budgeted. We would ask that be done as a change order, so that we can coordinate that with the existing group that has.
This is an add-on to what we already had budgeted for that?
No, no, it's, we had two hundred thousand budgeted, and the total price is two thirty-five.
Gotcha, okay.
So, it will be an add of that. And then, we added some electrical outlets, as requested by the sheriff, because y'all are gonna use the blue suits as the dormitory, so that was a couple of thousand dollars. I forget exactly what that was, to bring that up to the total.
Well, thirty-five is a lot better than two thirty-five.
Yeah, no, no, it's thirty-five, not two thirty-five. The, the second change order, and I discussed it briefly last time, is they were digging for the outbuilding, they ran into some debris, concrete debris, stumps, other things, that apparently, and we don't know the history of that, but apparently over the years, somebody cleaned off the site and just put it there, thinking that there would never be anything built on the side of that hill. We looked at some options to avoid this, or different ways to do it. One of them was piling, but because of the concrete debris and not going to the extent, the only piling that we would work without removing all that would be what's called micro piling, to drill through there. And the only company that we could find was out of Memphis. By the time we did that, it was gonna delay that part of the project two, three months, and wasn't gonna really be substantial savings. So, what you see before here, what we asked the contractor to do would give us a maximum not to exceed price, because we really don't know the extent of it. And so, what we suggested was we'd get that, and then we'd have the testing agency monitor the actual truckloads of debris hauled off and dirt come in. So, the price on that was a hundred fifty-one, two hundred thirty-nine as a maximum not to exceed. It could be lower, but it's probably not gonna be much lower than that. So, given change orders, one and two, the total of that is three hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and sixty, but actually, you take out the two hundred thousand that we already had budgeted in there. So, if you, if the board was to approve that, then that would bring you up to a price of four million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars, which is still under the original, what we estimated at five million dollars. And I'll go back to this a little bit more detail at the end. We still, we're working on the K-9 kennel. We've got, you know, our estimate right, that's a quarter million dollars. That will be done as a change order to the project. So, when you add all these pieces up right now, you would be at twenty-four million, five hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and sixteen and eighty-seven cents. That includes everything but the chancery. We still don't know exactly what that price is. But if you take that from the twenty-five million dollar bond issue, that leaves you a balance of still four hundred and sixty-nine thousand plus dollars left out of that twenty-five million. Plus, we still have a, for both projects, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar contingency that we, that will come back to the county if we don't use it. So, that's where we're at right now. Going back to the two change orders, you know, the security was always, we knew we were gonna have to do that. What's unknown was the dirt. But we would recommend approval of both of those, based on where we're at in overall cost figures. And I can answer any more detailed questions about either of that, or any of that, or the change orders. Anybody has any questions on it?
The, the, security cabling, that's for the misdemeanor.
The misdemeanor.
We, do we have it in our budget for the courthouse?
Yes, sir.
I thought we left it out.
We, we left it out of the, but we're carrying that as another two hundred thousand dollar allowance, and they're working on giving us a price on that right now.
But it's included in the twenty-four million, five hundred and thirty-six.
Yes, it is included. Now, again, it may be somewhat higher, since we're doing it as a change order, or it may be another twenty thousand. I, I'm not sure right now, but we are carrying the two hundred thousand for that. And we're carrying, also, in the courthouse, we're carrying another two hundred thousand for audiovisual, and we're carrying a hundred thousand dollars for landscaping. You may remember, we took those out of the original contract, thinking, on the advice of our consultants, we could save some money. Now, if they come in higher, I'm gonna have both consultants here to explain why.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're still working on both of those. That audiovisual, my consultant tells me that this month, they have a big show in, I think it's Las Vegas, where they introduce all the latest, and he would, would like to wait till after that, because he thinks, with audiovisual, apparently, they come out with better technology, and supposedly, according to him, it's less priced. So, he's thinking we can get better equipment at less cost, and whether that's true or not. And we're all working on the landscaping.
Check it that way there.
To work on that to see, right now, to get that, see if we can reduce that price, which we know we're gonna do, because we're cutting some landscaping out, because we, we added retaining wall on the north side of the property, which saved us some money there. So, that's where we're at on that. But between those two items, there's another three hundred, thirty, there's another three hundred thousand that we have budgeted, that we're working toward trying to keep in that figure. Did that, that answer that?
Yes, sir.
So, we've, we've tried to anticipate everything here, and obviously, there's still things that can come up. I don't, we're not gonna find any more, as far as I know in the courthouse, we've done all that dirt work. I wouldn't anticipate anything there. So, what we need to have is some flat sites in the county. Is there any more flat sites around here?
Not many that we have.
No, not in the area.
I just happen to know where there's no place.
Anyhow, that's where we're at. Both projects, as far as scheduling, the misdemeanor is scheduled right now to be finished in February next year, and the courthouse in March of next year. That's, and that includes the.
March.
Due to, yeah, due to the rain, the rain that we've had.
That means that we'll hit it just right for about April and May to do the landscaping, because it really won't be until May, until we go in.
That's the schedule right now. We, you know, well, I think, we think we've experienced the majority, most of the work. Once we get, they're doing the slab now with the misdemeanor. Once we get out of the ground, rain won't impact nearly as much.
You have signage? What are we doing signage-wise for the building? Like putting anything on the building, or are we having a sign outside?
We do have signage on the buildings, and I can get you copies of that, but those are in the budget.
That's fine, I was just curious. I just kinda popped in, you said landscaping, I was thinking, whether or not we were gonna do something.
And actually.
I think we oughta do a naming, like Petco Chancery Court Building, or Trustmark.
Well, now, you know, we, we can change the signs, so, at the county.
That's gonna be a lot of activity going in this building, so somebody would appreciate having their name out there on it, you know. I'm not opposed to it. Alright, anything else, Mr. Carl?
No, that's, that's.
Is there something we need to add to the agenda later?
We can do it on Monday. Probably better to do it on Monday, we can get all the documentation.
Right.
Yeah, I, I need to change, I didn't realize, Mr. Morris, now the president, I need to change that, from what I sent y'all.
Alright, anything else, Mr. Carl?
No, sir.
Carl, we appreciate it. Thank you. Anybody else for public discussion?
Carl was not in the meeting here, we moved you into the president's spot, Mr. Morris.
He missed that, that was when we were asking him to be here, and he didn't show up? That was one of those times?
He responds to you better than he did me, so, I mean, he's here, so. I told him, but I tell a lot of people stuff, and nobody listens, you know, but, no, I'm just joking. That's right. Bob runs a tighter ship, there's no question about it.
I'm a simple person. I need, I need a director.
I've got Janice, there were seven thousand unread emails, so I don't know what I'm gonna do, you know, so.
Alright, Mr. Slay, I think you're next up on the agenda.
So, the first item is fairly simplistic, I think. We're gonna adopt a board order that establishes the lien amount for the county's action in removing a dilapidated structure at four sixty-seven Hickory Hill Place in Florence. You guys declared that a nuisance. You authorized the building official to secure estimates on removing. We got one, the, the low estimate that came back is three thousand dollars. We authorized that contractor to remove the structure. That, the structure has now been removed, and so this is following up to get a board order, so that a lien can be placed against the property itself for the amount of the cleanup. And so, you have the actual lien in your packet today, along with the board order establishing the lien amount. Under the codes section that authorizes us to take this action, there is the provision of a penalty on top of the cost. It's a not to exceed figure, can be up to fifty percent of the actual cost of cleanup, or fifteen hundred dollars, whichever is greater. And so, I mean, whichever is lesser. And so, this actually turns out to be exactly fifty percent of three thousand, fifteen hundred, that's the max we could do. So, that's the amount of penalty that's being applied here. So, you're being asked to enter a board order in a total amount of forty-five hundred dollars, that that be secured against the property. The board president will execute it, and then your tax collector will collect those monies in the same manner as any other property tax that's associated with the property. So, if it's unpaid, it'll simply move through the sale, and we'll collect it that way.
So, during this year's sale, it would be paid?
Yes, assuming that someone steps forward and bids that on it, that'll be inclusive of the bid amount. So, it'll be the underlying property tax, plus the penalties associated with the tax, plus this lien amount will have to be paid.
We hadn't put in any other liens on this property.
No, sir.
Have we?
That's correct.
Exactly. There is a limit, in a year or something.
Yeah, actually, the limitation, Steve, is we can spend up to twenty thousand dollars on any one property, over the period of time that we deal with a nuisance.
Okay.
Up to twenty thousand, that's the max.
Yeah.
But this particular piece of property has not been dealt with by this board prior to this action. So, we would ask that you approve that board order and authorize the president to sign that.
Make motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Morrison, second. Mr. Gaines, any questions? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Follow up on the Craig-Slay heavy haul ordinance.
I love that, I love that, yep. So, other people get their name put on a courthouse, I get, I get my name put on a haul ordinance, alright? Seems fair. So, we're gonna follow up on our discussion. So, what we're asking you guys to do today is to come back to us now, give us any feedback. We told you we'd do that at this point, that we'd come back and we'd have feedback with respect to the proposed ordinance, and let you guys hash it out with us, and then be prepared at some point by the end of next month to be in a position to adopt something that makes sense for everybody.
Or something to have a public hearing.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And adopt it, assuming what it might be.
Maybe more than one.
So, the thought process, without reviewing the tape, I think, I think the thought process was that we would, on the fourth, we would set the public hearing for the fifteenth, and then we would have something for you guys to consider post-hearing at the end of the month, or the first of July. But we'll do it anyway.
Yeah, I don't, I won't rush it that much. I definitely want to, if we can all agree to, you know, what we want.
That's the biggest problem with first.
Yeah.
So, Kyle Williams, with Bernini is here, he's been helping us, like a champ, pull together example haul ordinances from other jurisdictions, that gives some sort of guidance to us as to how those guys are dealing, how other folks are dealing with these, these haul issues that they face, that the destruction of county roads by overweight vehicles, and how they're doing that. So, Kyle may have some additional information to share with you about some other jurisdictions. I will note that we were hopeful that Lauderdale, which is currently looking at this issue, might have gotten to some point of decision. They are still talking to what I'll call stakeholders, loggers.
Just like us.
Yeah, they're, they're waiting on us, more than likely. Y'all first, kinda deal. But they're, they're still having their conversations, kinda like we are. I'll, I'll say this, from the perspective of timber operations especially, that they have, it's a much bigger game for Lauderdale County than even, than even Rankin County. I mean, that is a significant industry in that neck of the woods, and so I can imagine that they're wanting to be real clear about how they're gonna address specifically timber hauling. You know, we, we've got a bigger deal with, with dirt, with dirt that's being moved, with as much construction activity we have going on. But we also have timber operations that are right here with us as well, so we get a little bit of boat. So, if you've got any questions about that, I know we've got some, some information on Harrison County that I wanted Kyle to speak about specifically. Trey sent me a message this morning, let me know that Harrison, I think they adopted theirs about, what, ten years ago, something like that, oh-five, in that range. They, they take just a slightly different approach. So, I don't wanna step on Kyle, but we may wanna look at how they do things and see if that makes sense for us, too. So, Kyle.
Good morning. I'll just get right to that, if you'd like me to. So, Harrison County, as opposed to a permitting process, Harrison County has designated certain roads in the county as truck routes, and they, they filter trucks to those routes. So long as you're operating on those, those routes, those roads, permit is not required. When you go off of those routes, they do have a permitting process. And their, their weight limit is forty thousand pounds. So, that's a little different than what we've seen, really, in any other county, at least counties from the ordinances we've been able to get our hands on.
How do they do forty thousand when you log with loggers?
That's off those roads you're talking about. Forty thousand must not apply.
Right, right.
Yep.
It's on what road?
It's, so if you leave the, if you leave the designated routes, and you're over forty thousand pounds, then you get a permit.
So, an empty truck could run home, or go to the store, or, I mean, go wherever. An empty truck would be under forty thousand, hopefully.
Yeah.
I, I think so.
I'm getting a nod, yes.
Yeah.
Um, whatever specific concerns y'all may have.
Well, my concerns are the same as it was last time, hadn't changed. I really don't think that having every individual driver to come in and select a permit. For example, Home Depot, they deliver lumber every day. Well, if we require that person to come get a permit every day for every job that he was gonna do, I, I just don't see that as being feasible.
It can get back to your exemption list, which I think we've already started it with the school bus and the utility companies, everybody.
Service-related trucks.
I like, I like that part of it, of what Harrison does, because, I mean, you've got certain big roads, Brandon Star, White Road, you know, other, other Leesburg roads, stuff like that.
Pretty big.
State aid roads. Yeah, you know, state aid road, yeah.
That's what I was thinking to say. I wonder if more there, do they have more state aid roads in their possibly routes than we do?
I'm not sure. I can look into that.
I was just wondering, I could see how they would funnel it all to the state aid road. I don't know, the way we're configured, how hard it'd be to funnel things to a state aid road.
Well, I think in order to make this more palatable and fair to everyone across the board, it would be a home builder, a guy who's running a dirt pit or logging timber, that once it's done, that there's a permit pulled at the time the job starts. If a sand pit opens up, he pulls a permit, he's given his route that his trucks need to take, and if for whatever reason, they need to go off of the approved roads that we already have, they need to seek the road manager to get a variance, not necessarily come forward board supervisors, because that would be a very much, you know. I agree with everything, except, when somebody opens up a sand pit or dirt pit, they may have a couple of trucks, but the majority of those trucks has come in and getting dirt and sand, have nothing to do with that guy that's operating it. He's just selling dirt. That's right, but they do have something to do with every other job. If a, if a contractor's building a building, or if a home builder's building a building, they're gonna pull a permit, and they're gonna have their route, if, for hiring dirt haulers. Yeah, but we can't tax that guy that has the dirt pit for trucks that are not his or drivers. I wasn't suggesting. Oh, I thought you were saying. No, I, I was saying that the permit is pulled at that point in time, and a route is given at that point in time. So, any truck driver leaving that dirt pit knows that this is the route he needs to take. And if he is off the road loaded and is pulled over, he needs to be able to provide a permit where he's going to. And that permit could be very easily from whatever job he's working on. I think it's something that could be done.
Did you say we're backing off, making the builder be responsible for all of that, and making each individual contractor subcontractor be knowledgeable?
I think we need to put the. I think we need to put the responsibility on the driver of the vehicle.
I think that's gonna be hard to do. I think you're almost better off having somebody in Renee's office where somebody submits a request, the pool, say, okay, here's our persons in charge of making sure you do road permits, whatever, and that person makes sure that they go to, that the builder knows about it. I don't, I just get back to the enforceability of this whole thing. I appreciate what we're trying to accomplish, but I just don't, I don't know.
Well, I think the goal is not to harass a lot of people. We want to be able to take care of the people who don't do right. And currently, we don't have a good mechanism to do that.
They're gonna look at it as harassment.
We, you know, just since we have started discussing, really seriously discussing these haul routes and there's a whole lot less rogue truckers out there running up and down my roads in my district. So it can have an effect. If we don't do anything, I think they'll go back to where they were or worse. But I probably have the most logging of anywhere in the county and they used to run rampant. I mean, it would, and most of them that were the bad guys were not from Rankin County. But we don't, we're not seeing as much of that. Mike, do you get the complaints that we got six, eight months ago, a year ago? I mean, every now and then.
They logged it all out.
The biggest problem we have, see, with our loggers right now is, I mean, that's clean on these guys right here, is, you know, we have loggers that cut through our county to get over to another county instead of going down the interstate. Most of our stuff that we have is somebody coming down, getting off of M. Highway, cutting through the county, so they don't have to run on the M. Highway. And that's what they're vying for, is to run on M. Highway, because they're scared the weight man or the DOT man don't pull them over, so they can rotate the chance to cut through our county to do that. And they know somebody's gonna say nothing to it. I mean, I got, we're just, over late, and I'm shooting for that, Woodrow Martin, I get complaints all the time of log trucks coming out of another county using that road because it's a good road. They cut across there and they dodge and get by 18 and 19, and they'll dive and blow buck down there and they cut across another road, you know? And they just do it, because they've just always been able to do it, you know? But that is a state aid road. I agree with what they're saying right here. I don't think, I think we got major roads that we can put out here to withstand.
Woodrow Martin, state aid.
Or just state aid, yeah.
If you're all forty's right down there.
Yeah, state aid, yeah.
With the exception of having a permit where the job.
State aid.
Where if he goes build a site, he'll send in his permit to the 84 lumber or to the brick company or to the dirt guys that he's doing business with.
But you're putting it back on the builder, right? I thought that's what you didn't want.
I'm not, I'm saying the builder pulls the permit. At that point in time is when we would establish the route.
But he's responsible for getting the permit to the truck driver?
You're right. He would be one of them responsible for sharing the information with them.
I really think if we did not include the service type trucks, service delivery trucks, we would cut our problems by 60%. If you didn't have to worry with.
Well, we could take the home builders all out then.
Well, I'm trying, I mean, seriously, it's literally not the guy that's delivering.
Bulldozer and they clear the lot, that's the service.
He's gonna be there one year, gone.
I agree.
That's not the people that's coming back and forth and, well.
Well, I mean, that comes to the bend of multiple heavy loads that come there, the traco, the bulldozer, the dirt, lumber truck, I mean, that's what, if you look at it, that's the multiple was what deteriorates the road. It's not that one, it's the 20 at one time.
You're gonna get back to enforceability issues, well, a couple of things. You're gonna be subjecting yourself to an argument that there is an unequal treatment just simply on the basis of something that's not easily identifiable. Okay? So why is it that the dirt hauler has to go through this entire permitting process, but the guy operating the lowboy, he doesn't have to worry about it?
Right. And the guy hauling, cut timber off the place to start with, he goes through it too. So it's gonna come back to the timber guy and the dirt guy.
Yeah. And clearly, we know that we're focused there because that is what we observe to be the most likely cause of the damage. But it's a difficult argument to make when you're trying to structure an ordinance, that you don't want to be subjected to a tie for being unequal in its treatment of essentially equal folks. Everybody needs to be treated the same. So we've gotta be careful about that. Secondarily, you would be asking your enforcement team to do the impossible, try to figure out who's in, who's out? Why are they in, why are they out?
I got a question for legal, Matt. We've got a road, it's a public road, a county road, and whether it's a newly asphalted road or not, and somebody's building two or three houses down here, and like Jared said, you know, you got equipment that comes in, you got a lowboy comes in, you got a brick truck, you got a lumber truck, you got, and they're going and coming, and they're not overweight, not any of them, and they're not doing anything wrong. They're just hauling in there and unloading their equipment or material and leaving, and the road gets torn up. I mean, it's just the nature of, I mean, it's, at some point, we just gotta say that happens whenever trucks go on roads and we don't, we couldn't build this building down here, the courthouse, if we didn't have some big trucks bringing stuff in or anything else.
Bringing that drag line in, Lord knows it's overweight.
I mean, I know it hurts, I mean, that's our budget, is having to refi, rework it, but the ones that I think we really should focus on are the road, the repeat offenders, the people that are intentionally trying to.
I think you'd almost be subject to a question if you, if you, this guy's not overloaded, I mean, he'd almost say, hey, I'm as legal as I can be to be on this road. I'm not overweight. I mean, I really kind of feel that way with all public roads, even the ones that some of the cities say no trucks through there. If they're not overweight, well, they'll lower a weight down so low that you can't go across. But I don't know where they base that on really either. I mean, legally, how can they really base it on a weight limit? Unless there's a bridge or something there that gives them some, a guideline to go by. I mean, I kind of argue that myself.
Yeah, and to your point, Supervisor Gaines, there's some case law that says, essentially says, people have a right to travel the roads. And so, you're right, I mean, at some point, damage will happen, it's to be expected. I think Supervisor Bishop, I can address two concerns, the two concerns it seems like you have from provisions that are not included in our current draft, that are from other counties. The first one, Madison County has an exemption for one-time deliveries or repeat deliveries in the same day. So you're making multiple trips in the same day. The reason we were kind of worried about that is, is it seems like a slippery slope. Now, the way they have it is, it's, the road manager gets to determine whether they can proceed with those loads, those trips. But essentially, where we kept coming back to is, if it's being hauled, it's a delivery. And so if you exempt, make sweeping exemptions for deliveries, you may have defeated the purpose of having the ordinance in the first place.
I was thinking, so, that's what he's doing. He's delivering dirt.
We thought about it, we did, for a while, and we couldn't conceive really a circumstance where you would be hauling something that wouldn't be considered a delivery, or at least couldn't be construed to be conceived as a delivery.
I would argue that too, though. This lumber guy goes up there and he puts his lumber off, this dirt guy goes over, he dumps his dirt off. He's, that's a real slippery, that's singling out the dirt guy going, no, you're not delivering.
The only guy you get there is the worker, because he leaving.
Yeah.
He ain't delivering. He's coming out with something headed, so he goes in unloaded, comes out loaded, so you got him.
Yeah.
But everybody else, you get dirt guy leaving the pit is one thing, but headed somewhere, he's a delivery.
I guess if he's leaving there and he's hauling rubbish off, then he's not a delivery. That's such a gray area.
I think that.
I delivered a load of dirt hauling rubbish off.
Not focusing on the trucks themselves, but focusing on the route is probably the best, I mean, if we can say, like, here's the routes that you take, and if you're over 40,000 on one of these other roads, you're violating our haul. And I guess whoever you are.
And the way about going about getting the permit, I don't know that.
How do we establish our weight limit on roads? Where do we come up with that?
Just an empty big truck.
No, I'm just meaning, how do you establish that road is a 40,000 pound road versus a 80 or whatever weight limit you, how do you establish that?
You don't have to, under what Harrison County's doing, they have identified the specific roads and they have said, if you are on this road, you can be in a truck, period.
Precedent to 40,000, I guess, I guess any of your lowboys is empty.
Right.
So if it's, for people that's empty, don't have to permit something, they can go.
And you don't ask about the 40,000 until they are not on one of those designated roads.
I understand, I mean, my point is, how did they establish that was a 40,000 pound weight limit road?
You want to know how they established the designated road?
No, just how do they say that road? How you establish, you get a weight limit on any road?
I would imagine you would have to, and Craig, you can probably correct me, I would imagine you would have to take into consideration the way in which the roads were built and the designs.
Age, width.
What is it, 469, what's that, 57,000? Right there.
Yeah, what we're suggesting is, worry about so much whether or not a road can handle a 40,000 pound load and be more concerned about which of the roads that we think can handle even an 80,000 pound load, and let's delineate those as truck routes. These are our truck routes. And then everything else, if you're over 40, you get a permit for that.
Okay, just what I said, though, 469 is 57,000. They're running down it, 80,000.
Yeah, and I would think that if we went this direction, 469 would be one of the safe roads, would be one of the roads that we would select. So Monterey coming off of 469 may or may not be on the route. So if he's on 469, he's 80,000 pounds, he's good. If he turns onto Monterey, he better get a permit.
I would think our state aid roads would be acceptable routes also.
Yeah, so we're just, you know, state roads, state aid roads, probably are gonna meet the test that they can handle the weight, they'll be on the list of acceptable roads, no permit required. Everything else, if you're gonna be on it with a truck that exceeds 40,000 pounds, you're gonna need a permit. So the idea, I think, ultimately will be that we're going to have some heartburn over the breadth of the ordinance, that is, what it's likely to impact as far as activity is concerned, but effectively allow your enforcement folks to have the common sense to deal with the individual circumstances that you're not gonna be able to identify on the front end. So have your ordinance broad enough to take care of the activity, but let your enforcement people have the flexibility and the discretion to be able to deal with who is the bad guy that we really need to get on top of and who are the guys that are genuinely just unaware and give them an opportunity to get upstairs.
Okay, what do you do, how's this gonna help the situation that Daniel, that created all this?
So none of Castle Woods would be on the acceptable truck route list.
You still gotta get in there.
But he'd have a route.
But he'd still have to, it wouldn't have prevented tearing up the road from getting that.
Well, it would have limited the road damage, because we would have had him on certain roads coming in, not through the whole subdivision.
Well, that one road, the main road that got tore up, what's on there, he wouldn't have eliminated that.
Well, and the thing with it is, in all our subdivisions, that's kind of the issue. I mean, yeah, we'd want to keep them off Hugh Ward Boulevard, which we just spent over a million dollars on. We'd want to route them other ways into that stuff. And we got dump trucks running through there now, trying to cut in the old fan, when we want them to go down Spillway Road and 25. So there's multiple spots, the issue is to me, just because primarily what I've got are subdivision entrances, that how we get them in the subdivision. But as long as we don't mind fixing the whole thing once they're done, we can kill the haul ordinance.
Well, we just don't fix it all, we just fix the spots that are bad.
But that, no, but that's my point, they tear up the whole thing. So I guess my issue is, if we can limit them to the spots they just tear up, then we don't need a haul route. But that's kind of what got us into the situation we're in. As long as we don't mind putting the money in to fix everything that's tore up, we can kill the whole haul.
The problem is, you got, it's not a new road.
Some subdivisions are.
No, I know that, but I mean, so many of them, they're not a new road and seldom do they tear up a new road. But to go in there on a road that's five years, eight years old, since it was fixed, it's kind of hard to single out that guy, because it's been fatigued over time.
So y'all are helping us sort of identify maybe a little bit of a pathway here that might make sense that we probably need to explore. And that is, should we go, should Kyle and I sit down with Mike and Mr. Buster and start looking at roads in the county that we can, on the front end, say, those are probably okay for us to designate as truck route? And get a list going and then meet with you guys and let y'all help us add to or take away from as it relates to your district, right? And we could come up with, by the end of next month for sure, we could come up with a fairly detailed list of roads that would fit the no permit required list. If y'all are okay with that, we'll start moving in that direction.
The big thing I want in the whole situation is that when we have subdivisions set up and we have trucks and whatever hauling into these subdivisions, that we identify certain routes into these subdivisions that are the roads they're gonna go on. In other words, we say, we know we're gonna lose this road, tear it up, destroy it, whatever you want to do, drive on, but stay on that road. That's my whole point on the, and it's for subdivision work. What happens outside of the subdivisions? Destroy it all and do whatever.
So here's, Daniel, to address your question, guy leaving Mountain Hill, is coming down 25, 471, he gets to 25, he's headed to Castle Woods. He's gonna be okay when he's at 471 and 25, he's good. He doesn't need a permit on either of those roads. He gets all the way to Castle Woods Boulevard, he's gonna need a permit at that point right there. That's where Mike's guy steps in and say, you're overweight and you're gonna be off of a, an acceptable truck route when you hit Castle Woods Boulevard. So here is your, as a part of the permit process.
We want you to go this route.
If he never makes the left onto Castle Woods coming from 471, he's gold. He's going 25, he's just gonna keep running going, he doesn't need a permit for any of that.
Yeah, I mean, that's my thing. My thing is subdivision destruction, to limit it as much as possible.
And I think by heading down this, figure out which roads are in or out process, we can define, especially for District 2, where we've got so many county subdivisions, we'll be able to substantiate which ones, if you stay on these roads, you won't need a permit, but the second you get off, you're gonna have to have a permit and we're gonna establish a route for you within that.
And Jake, what I was saying was, part of the thing that, you know, the long document they put together for you or whatever, I mean, the list, that was back on the bill. And that's what you're saying, that's what confused me kind of, what you're talking about, because I know, I don't necessarily care if it's on the builder or the driver or whoever it's on, you're saying their issue, the Home Builders Association, was they didn't want it on the builder or the contractor.
Well, they didn't want to have, you know, the responsibility of the whole road.
Right, but what I'm saying is, under what you just said, it puts it back on them.
No, the only thing they're responsible is pulling the permit and getting the route established.
Okay, responsible by meaning what?
Whenever they go to start a job, they have to get a permit. And at that point in time, I'm assuming the road manager or someone from that department will assign a route.
I guess my question is, what is their level of responsibility, other than nothing, just get the permit, pass it over, and then they're out of the picture? They got no responsibility after they go get the permit route?
With the exception of the property out in front of their house or the road they're building on, I would think. With the exception of the, the property out in front of their house or the, the road they're building on, I would think, you know? If they do damage to it.
What do you mean the road they're building on? Like the, the, I mean.
If they have equipment in the front of the house that they're building where they go and tear up the road. Unload and load the equipment, what have you.
All right, so they're responsible for that part of the road?
Yeah.
What if, what, I mean.
But I guess, I, I, and I'm just trying to understand, that's their responsibility, the road in front of their house?
I would think, 'cause I mean, truthfully, that's the biggest part of my mind, that these possibility of tearing up roads to any extreme.
All right.
Before, I didn't ever go look at the one that started all this.
All right, so, all right, so that's part of the issue on the Scott Nace side?
That's what I'm saying, I never went to go look at the one that started all this, but I understand though, the biggest damage was done where he unloaded all of his equipment, loaded up all the locks and everything.
Would you think that's part of his responsibility?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think going forward, it still will be.
Okay.
But I'm simply saying that the home builder can't be responsible for the dirt guy he's doing business with to be on the route that he's given. I think it will take some time to be learned, the process. Uh, but like I said, I don't think, we're not doing this to start harassing people. We're doing this just to be able to have a mechanism that we didn't have before for where people come in on the weekend and try to open up a dirt pit and start hauling or, or at night.
The, the only thing I want in the whole issue is to have a designated route into a subdivision and you stay on that route. But there has to be some type of punishment. If you don't, just say, no, I'm gonna take all four entrances into this subdivision and do what I feel like doing. That, I mean, there has to be a.
Well, that's why I say it needs to be on the drivers.
Okay, I, I agree with you, I'm good with it.
Does everybody understand that specifically on this subdivision issue, we're only talking about a situation where the subdivision has been completed and has already been turned over to the county for maintenance? We got that right?
Yep.
If it's a new subdivision.
Yeah, it's whatever.
It's part of our subregs and it's dealt with through the protections that are available there.
Right.
So we're literally talking about older subdivisions where we have existing lots, unimproved lots.
Or phase two.
Activity.
Or additional phases.
Phase two, three.
That's a great example, but even at that stage, we use our letter of credit. That is for phase two, to protect phase one. So we, we have mechanisms to deal with, uh, current ongoing subdivision development. We can handle that.
Good.
We're literally talking about a tiny universe of where the major issues are. It's existing subdivisions where there is livestock available that's unimproved and construction action, activity that's gonna be ongoing.
I would say that's probably a high, high percentage, but it's still, like Mike's saying, and in my end of the county and down there, Jared's, no, what, Bob's? Where these out of county loggers find a path that they can get around M dots inspections and they use our roads, whether they're running empty or full. And I, and I can tell you, an empty log truck will tear your road up just as much as a full, because it's bouncing. Especially when they're running. But, I mean, those guys are the ones that, uh, we need to not lose our attention on also. I mean, I just don't wanna minimize that by saying we're only looking at subdivisions.
I would think, uh, by going to an approach that says, if you are on these specific roads, you don't need a permit and if you are not on one of these roads, you do, that ma- that really simplifies enforcement. It creates some work on the front end, 'cause we're gonna have to identify the roads, but it really simplifies enforcement.
I think the biggest question is who is responsible for getting the permit?
That's it, that's, that's, that was my question, Jay.
Well, that's why I think, when the builder, oh, it's by the job.
Yep.
Whatever job they're doing, it'll be either the dirt pit they're hauling out of will have the posted, uh, uh, route that is given to him that was assigned once he opened the pit. Same for the, the timber hauler, he was given the route that was assigned.
I got a question, Jay. If the dirt pit is sitting here and he has a job over here with the subdivision, another job over here with the subdivision, and a job down here, one.
No, see, all I'm saying was whenever, whenever the guy comes open the dirt pit, he's only given a, a route that he's told that trucks need to travel to get to and through, to and from his dirt pit. But there's gonna be tons of people come in and possibly buy dirt from him. But each truck driver is gonna be working a job that has had a permit pulled. Whether it be from a, a developer, you know, a home builder, uh, some type of construction, there's gonna be a permit pulled.
Because, you know, originally when we set this thing up was, it was just for the overlay district, which was dealing with, and it's wording in the current regulations right now on platted subdivisions, which is where we're, that's where the big call, I mean, I would make the assumption that all of our larger roads, main travel roads can endure whatever damage these trucks are putting on. Subdivision just can't.
Right.
And that's where I'm overloaded with two hundred of them.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's what I've gotta try to take care of in this whole deal, 'cause we can't, we can't afford to fix it.
Yep.
So that's where this thing was created and written around the, the platted subdivision side.
Even now though, we got dirt pits that are coming through subdivisions now.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Very heavily built out areas.
Well, Hugh Ward Boulevard is a prime example, that they use that to cut through and we just got that baby slicked out, you know, so.
Yeah.
Which we got a dirt pit across the street, you know?
Yes, sir. So Amit County has kind of a hybrid. And what they do is they put the onus on the, uh, responsible party of the project. So it would be like a contractor or if you're the timber company cutting the timber at a specific location, that person is charged with going to get the permit, but listing everyone who will be driving, um, in conjunction with that project. And in turn, the, the two, the driver, so if a driver gets pulled over, doesn't have a permit, uh, both the, uh, responsible party of the project and the driver are jointly and severally liable for, for any penalty and then for any ensuing damage. So it's kind of a hybrid, they're both liable.
It ties, ties them together.
But it, but it is efficient in that there's one permit and there's a list of drivers, which, which certainly could change by the week. Um, potentially that could be amended, um, even maybe even by email or something like that to facilitate that list. But there is one permit and then a list of, of people who will be operating on that project. But, but in terms of liability, but un- under, under Amit County statute, uh, ordinance, they're both still.
Sure, I could see that in like timber, because most of the time, they, they are their own drivers. I guess very seldom they.
I don't know, they saw about a bunch of them.
They do?
Most of them.
Okay.
Yeah, they saw about.
And that's a definitive market steal, I mean, that's still a definitive group of folks. But we, when we pull in the house building side and everything else, and that's gonna get so many more different layers there. I just don't know how you're gonna educate the drivers with the routes. If you can put signs up all day long, they ain't gonna pay attention to them. You can give them a ticket and then we don't get a phone call.
GPS sent me right through there.
Well, I mean.
I mean, it does. And they don't, they have, 'cause there's some guy that's out of town coming through here and he's following GPS and he's taking him to, from fifty-five to forty-nine and it takes him right up through a no haul road.
And we didn't feel good about having an ordinance that says the contractor or the equivalent, the, the responsible party has to get the permit and then just issuing tickets to the driver. Because we felt like the driver could say, well, the ordinance doesn't say, doesn't even give me the, the duty to go get the permit.
Where's my notice?
So we felt kind of a, maybe even a due process issue there. But it is a, it is, it is kind of difficult and, um, the ordinances that we have really don't account for, for those concerns or even for the, um, for your, your lumber yards delivering, you know, daily, uh, deliveries. They really don't account for that. And so, a- again, we're back to enforcement, we don't really know how they enforce those specific provisions, but their ordinances reflect a blanket application.
In the past, we've done things where you knew they were gonna be hauling there, with, with the pipeline. They came up and they had designated routes they were using, true enough. But then, once they got started, someone ventured away from it, 'cause they realized there's some shortcuts here. And then we've had situations where, and, but anyway, after they filmed it, after they helped pay for some of the damages and all that. And the same thing, when we had roads where they logged and we knew they were gonna probably destroy that road. We worked out that was, that they were gonna, we didn't work out that they were gonna help pay for the road once they left. This road came from the woods to the main road. And they worked out a deal, uh, of basically like a bond, but they signed an agreement, you were part of that, that said, we will be responsible up to this amount on this road. And we came up with a fee and, uh, it turned out they didn't have, we didn't have to use it, but they did agree to it. So I know some loggers that wouldn't even bid that job because of that road, because they knew that was the only way out. And I know two particularly, but anyway.
But I mean, I, I agree with what you're saying, the same way on the loggers, on the same way on the, just 'cause I don't have log in, I've got the same situation in the dump, so I'm agreeing with you.
How can we figure, that's what I'm saying, how can we figure something out? Where if you know they're gonna be coming in there with all that and gonna be working.
Yep.
Smith Street down here and all that, you're more than likely gonna have severe damage.
So in order to make that situation work, you've gotta have the builder, contractor, whoever it is, to agree to say, hey, I, I'm gonna work with, on the county side and we'll figure out a mutual end.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
That's what, that's what got us here, is that we had builders say, I'm not working with you.
Exactly.
I'm fixing to just do whatever I'm gonna do, and you know, that's, that's what got us there. You see, so, but I agree with you, if you can get that situation to where the builder comes in, 'cause that's how we wrote this thing, was that the builder comes to Mike, they get on the same page and say, look, we know we're gonna cause a little damage here. We got it, we're on the same page, this is your respons- this is ours, and we go from there. That's what we got in place right now.
The problem, the thing I can see there is a guy's going in and building one house, but if he's going in and building like this was.
Seven, yeah.
Several, I can see the several, the one house deal, that's, that's a little stiff for him, for the guy building one house.
Can, can we look outside of Mississippi? I'm sure we're not the first ones, and I mean, I know it's a few in Mississippi that we're trying to look at. But could we look at, I mean, I'm just thinking Harris County with Houston, Texas, or not them really, but a, a county that's similar to ours and that's already completed this ten years ago and they've worked the kinks out.
We, so we've looked at some kind of nationwide, what we call secondary sources, which is just like a, a treatise of, of the law for several different states on this specific issue. And it was helpful, our concern was that our statutes are so specific, what you can and can't do and, and, you know, boards of supervisors, their, their power is pure, is statutory. And so we were concerned that we could find something that may be helpful, but we would have to, it would be such a struggle to try to find the authority or, or to try to translate that into what, uh, would be allowed in Mississippi. But, but we can certainly, we can certainly take a look at that. I think we're up to, I think we have eight ordinances now. Several voicemails that have been lingering on message machines for months now to try to get these other ones. There's several more that we know are out there, we're just trying to get them. Uh, I know that Kemper County just enacted one, which, you know, with the, the lignite plant up there, uh, would probably be really good to see. Um, we've been trying to get that one.
I would not be opposed to, to doing this in layers either. I mean, it, because I don't wanna throw a lot of stuff out there that we really don't know what we have or can't have. I mean, if we could start with the subdivisions or start in an area that we can manage and then learn our mistakes and if we, you know what I'm saying?
Subdivisions are the biggest, biggest situation.
Cause that's your weaker road.
I've got some other areas.
But they're probably the least used unless a builder is gonna come in and build seven houses.
Or additional phases or, I mean.
So Kyle, under, you said that there was some, uh, problems with notification or you moved it. Well, even if you take the, where the.
Do just what I said, if he's going to phase one, he gets to phase two.
Starts the project and lists the names of the drivers, can they not still say they were not given any notice?
This is okay. At that point, they've been identified by the responsible party as, as an extension of responsible party's authority on your permit. So if they're not on that list, then the issue is not the county's failure to notify them. The issue is the project manager's failure to get on the list. So how do you fix that, what do you give them?
I'm gonna say.
You say, common sense says, you need to be, you need to go to your project manager and make sure that they know them, to let us know that you're an authorized person under that permit. That's, that, that's their issue.
Like I said, the guy just put one house down here.
We would not likely be issuing a ticket on the first.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
We would say, you better get authority under the permit and then if they didn't do that and we called them again.
He built a lot of houses.
That's why I keep coming back to this common sense approach, by the way.
I put some sense on it.
Early on, it was, we, it was suggested that we try to tailor something that would be countywide, but only apply to platted subdivisions.
Because it aren't concrete trucks.
Okay, that was suggested. I don't remember who made that suggestion. It was suggested that we do countywide, but only platted subdivisions. Am I hearing you guys say, we may be interested in looking back at that?
I am, I, I think we should take small bites of it. And that's, that is where we're getting the most damage, uh, and it's probably easier to police it.
Well, if it's in a platted subdivision, which we can identify very easily and you are in a truck that meets some particular description and is not exempted, boy, this is starting to look like an ordinance that I'm familiar with already.
Yeah.
But just would be countywide, platted subdivision. I think we can probably police that pretty easily.
Well, the thing, like I was saying to Daniel, the, the one house being built down here is one thing. You bought seven lots down here and you're building on all seven, that's a whole different thing, 'cause you're gonna be running that, those ten, those dump trucks, those concrete trucks, everything on that same road. That's kinda like I was talking about where we were hauling those logs out. We know we're probably gonna create a good bit of damage on that strip, 'cause you got seven houses built in.
And, 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 'cause the, the ordinance that's there now basically says that i- if the guy's building one house, all he's gotta do is get with Mike and say, stay on this route to get in.
All right.
That's what we have right now.
It's gonna come back to the common sense of your enforcement people.
Your road manager.
Okay, you're only doing one lot, then this is not a big deal. This is not a big deal, stay on these roads in this subdivision and you don't have an issue with me.
So the easiest fix to the original document that Slay drafted for us is to say, not only is this for the overlay district, now it's the entire county for platted subdivisions, which is what we had.
Yeah.
See, I mean, but.
Well, what about, okay, but, and we're covered though, like you say, you got phase one and then you gotta go down there and do phase two, that's on down through there, but you gotta come through phase one to get to phase two. You can't cut, because you don't, you're, you're covered.
There's no reason for the builder to keep going off of the main drag that gets him to phase two. He's already finished construction.
Unless he can do a kind of a construction entrance to keep him out of it completely.
Yes, sir. So we, we can control subdivision development, multi-phase, we've got mechanisms to control that.
I thought so.
What we don't have mechanisms to control is Castle Woods. It's already ours, it's already our issue and there are still undeveloped lots.
Yeah, but you can do a phase two that wasn't included in phase you didn't know to start with, it came up later.
That's right.
Well, we had that since.
Developer goes belly up, developer sells phase three and four, he sells it in whole cloth to another developer.
Five years later, yeah.
And now he's come up with a totally separate subdivision name, not related at all to any prior construction and he wants to go through existing construction to get there.
Yep.
That, we don't have ways to deal with that right now, so.
We had this.
To, to try to get us to the end of today, uh, act four on this thing, I think, maybe.
Uh, I think we're well on page seven and four.
All right, Shakespeare's gonna be proud of this. What, uh, to try to get us to the end of the day, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, let's think about taking the current ordinance, make it countywide, dial it, dial it in in such a way that it's clear in y'all's mind, who, who has to go do what with respect to a permit? Get that clarified for y'all.
And take off the responsibility of, uh, posting bonds and.
Clarify for y'all, who's got to do the permitting and then who has to pay the freight if there's damage? How is that gonna be handled? We need to dial that in. How is that gonna be handled? We need to dial that in and make sure.
And, and it's a case by case situation based on the age and, I mean, what the condition of it was to start with. That's why it's a case by case basis on something, and I'm, I'm for you.
You don't wanna go in there, road, we're gonna overlay, we're gonna overlay uh, this year and he gets torn up, we're gonna beat this guy up, we already know it's in bad shape.
But on the flip side, if we've already overlaid it, then he comes in.
Yeah, well, I know that, but you.
Which is, I got that situation happening too. We just put over a million dollars down.
I think, I, I think it's, in some degree, we need to find out that, and you, you got more subdivision than the rest of us, I mean, sorry, when, when uh, what's your name back there in the shirt? Mike. Yeah, when Mike decides to, to overlay, decides to overlay a road in the subdivision, he needs to come to you and say, this, this summer, we're getting ready to do these two roads, the subdivision.
Yep.
Somebody in his department, somebody, or maybe somebody in Sullivan, well, we'll see how many vacant lots we got left on that lot, road. I mean, make sure that, you know, we don't have a problem like we ran into with Scott May in, in, in this road.
But, but, but I guess my thing is, you can't, no, I mean, I mean, that's exactly my point. You don't know how long that lot's gonna stay vacant.
Well, at least you know, I mean, at least you know, I mean, if, if it's like two lots, okay, fine, two houses, sure. But if there's twenty lots that are still left to be built on that road, we might say, well.
And think, think of the situation right here, we're in Palisades right now, finishing up on some stuff. We get an email, you know, yesterday from a woman fixing a clear lot in Palisades. I mean, that subdivision's been done for fifteen, twenty years. Well, we just put brand new stuff down there, what's fixing to happen to that? So, Mike's getting with her and getting on the same plan and we just need the, the builder or the contractor.
They locked up the favor machine yesterday and they're unloading those of the tractor.
How about that? You know what I mean, but, so I guess my, I guess my point is, we just need the ability to work with the contractor to say, look, we need, they have access routes into Palisades, it has to stay on these access routes, you know, but, so.
Okay.
So, what do we say on this, Slay?
We're gonna go back to the drawing board, we're gonna send Kyle, uh, a big thank you for all the work he's done on stuff we're gonna use.
Fastball, man, cheers.
We're gonna send the ordinance that are, we're gonna make sure, we're gonna make sure he's got a copy of it. And guys, we're gonna look at taking the existing ordinance, countywide, platted subdivision.
Jake, are you good with that?
Existing ordinance, take it to countywide, platted subdivision and get y'all clarified, we'll come back by the end of the month and get.
Not the existing ordinance.
We're gonna get y'all clarified on the stuff that you got issues with, Jake, which has to do with who's responsible for going and getting the permit, we need to tweak that, we need to.
I'm fine with starting with just subdivisions only.
Okay.
Alright, what did you just tell me about?
Yeah.
Okay.
It still takes three to make it happen though. And I'm so sure we'll, we'll get there.
Mr. Slay is giving the marching orders of what we're getting ready to accomplish going forward, uh, we'll wait to hear back.
But you could still incorporate some of your roads that are free to drive on, some of your main state aid roads you're.
Well, I mean, if you're just talking about platted subdivision, this makes a difference.
This is a state aid road, you can't say nothing to it.
Get it driven on.
Can't do that, right.
You can't do nothing with it.
Knock yourself out.
Their deal.
The only thing, at this point, where we are right now and what you'll be looking at by the end of June is an ordinance where a permit to haul would only be required if you are in a platted subdivision in that truck.
I'm good with it.
No other road?
But we got, but we have a lot of unplatted subdivisions too.
Yep, so we're, we're being very specific when we say platted subdivision.
I like Steve's approach, let's try it in the platted subdivision, see how it works for a year or two and if we, and we have a success, then we can kinda start moving on to name the unplatted subdivisions.
And remember, even the current, even the current ordinance that we have right now in the, in the overlay district, the current thing we've got in now, believe it or not, the housing market hasn't stopped. They're still building and they're still coming to get permits and they're still building houses over there. So, with the current existing ordinances there, nobody's progress has even slowed down even blinked with more subdivisions coming on, so.
So, Mr. Slay is giving the marching orders, Kyle, they'll come back and report back to us on the eighteenth, is that?
That's correct, that's our next one.
The eighteenth, is that?
We can do it on the eighteenth, if that's what y'all wanna, if y'all wanna discuss it further on the eighteenth, we'll have it ready by the end.
You highlight it, we're not voting on it.
Kyle, you don't live in Rankin County, do you?
We're gonna, end of the month, dude.
This is my call, says, I'm not moving to Rankin County.
End of the month, dude.
Cause these plans up here on this board.
No, after he drives through their county roads.
Alright.
Kyle said, I'm not coming back to Rankin County.
I wanna come to Rankin.
I'm stuck in traffic for forty minutes every morning.
The last meeting of the month in June is when we'll meet back on this.
We'll have it for the, we'll have it for the last meeting in June, not the mid-month. Y'all be coming back.
Will we get a draft, will we get a draft?
Who's gonna need to, who, who needs to be contacted? Bring up speed on this.
For stakeholders?
Yeah.
Well, they're not, we're not having that meeting yet.
I know.
Y'all bringing this back for us to discuss, make sure that we're all okay with what you're coming up with and then we're gonna hit the developers.
Before we get to that, yeah.
There's, I wanna say, every dirt hauler and every logger are not, we just get aggravated with the worst ones. So, I've got a dirt hauler, I mean, he has a pit, he called me, Steve, I've got two soft spots coming in the road down here and I have dug them out and put good dirt in them, you know, if y'all can get the blade, I, I just can't grade it back over. He said, but boy, whenever we find these soft spots and finish them, we're gonna have a good road. Now, that's a guy that has a dirt pit that is taking care of us and the guy was in here today that left, he'll grade road and clean ditches, it's not even his road.
Oh, I got it, yeah, it's, it's like your thing, it's the few bad ones that make it.
Okay, alright, we're good?
June twenty-eighth.
Shoot it for June twentieth, Kyle, we appreciate you coming.
Absolutely, thank y'all, appreciate it.
Kyle, thank you.
I'm going to allow uh, Mr. Dewey Arthur, one of our assistant DAs back there, he's been sitting patiently and he'll wanna come up and say a few words, he's more than welcome to do so.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Morris. Uh, I've met most of you individually, my name is Dewey Arthur and I am an assistant DA here in Rankin County. I'm running for circuit court judge, some of you know me, uh, Mr. Renee's poor daughter, you stay up till midnight crying during trials, because we would be on the phone working, but um, I have a meet and greet tonight, there was a mix-up at the printer and uh, they did not, what I told them was, any law enforcement, any elected officials do not send reply cards that, that talk about money and they left everyone's invitation out, so they just took them off the list. I did wanna tell y'all, it's very late notice, but if I could, just hand it to each of you briefly. I don't expect anybody to be able to make it on short notice, but I did wanna personally invite each of you. It's gonna be tonight at the uh, Reservoir Community Center and uh, anybody in the room is more than welcome to come, I'd love to have any of you there. And uh, you, you'll, thank you very much, Sheriff.
What kind of food?
Uh, David Ruth has cooked in too much brisket and too much pulled pork, so, you know, that's, that's what I got. But if, if any of y'all ever have any questions for me, my, my telephone number's six oh one, five oh two, three four zero eight. And uh, I, I'm always happy to answer them, but you know, I, just let me know and uh, we'd love to see y'all tonight.
Appreciate it, Derry.
Thank y'all.
Good luck to you, thank you. Alright, Ms. Oster, sound like a short term.
First item I have is, this is on our new misdemeanor facility and it's approval to pay application number four, Flagstar Construction, the amount of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty cents and authority to issue that check.
So, there.
Second. Motion, Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say ah, all opposed, like sign, motion carries, B.
Review of the agendas for Monday. Y'all have any questions?
I have a question, who is the, I've done, shut mine off now, uh, the, the, what?
What?
Oh, God, can you pull up? I have to, I have to see, here's a hard copy right here, are you doing consent?
Yeah.
It's a copy, a ripped copy on here.
The first like, one of the first lines on the consent on travel, uh, it was a lady going a couple different places, who did she work for?
Yeah, who, yeah, I know what you're talking about, Jake.
Oh, Nancy Wob?
Yes.
She's my day officer, I seen her.
Okay, she worked for you, okay. I didn't know she worked for human resources or for you.
Any other thoughts or comments on the agendas?
Nope.
We're good to go, you have anything else for additional business, Ms. Oster?
Not additional business, it's a good time.
We have the need to discuss, sir, sir, motion to discuss the need for executive session, so moved by Mr. Morris and second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say ah, all opposed, like sign. And what would that need be, Ms. Oster? Sir, motion for personnel litigation?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Mr. Bishop, second by Mr. Morris and all in favor, say ah, all opposed, like sign, motion carries. Those not needed, please disembark the moving shit train and let's get this executive.
Did you uh, did you have, have a meeting with our chatty?